How do you say, could you imagine going out of your driveway and, oh, alive?
We'll start with the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Andrew Johnson, if you'd come up and give us our prayer, please.
Let's pray. We thank thee, Father, for this opportunity we have to come to the meeting today, but I ask that your hand of protection and direction will be upon all of the members here. May they make good decisions that will benefit all of us here in our community. We ask that you would heal their hurts, that you'd give them comfort in their hour of need, and that you will bless them and us as we try to make our community the best that it can be. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. We'll call for public input. Seeing none, we have a proclamation for the week of the young child. Is there someone to come forward to accept that? Ladies, good to see you. This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh, Kansas, whereas all young children deserve quality, early learning environments that support them as capable and competent lifelong learners, and whereas young children need skilled, educated, competent, consistent, and compensated early childhood educators, and whereas early childhood education promotes the intellectual, emotional, and physical development of children, which in turn prepares them to be responsible and contributing members of society, and whereas high-quality early childhood education depends on high-quality childhood educators who ensure that children, supported by families, have the early experiences they need for a strong foundation, and whereas early childhood professionals and others who make a difference in the lives of young children in Pittsburgh deserve thanks and recognition, and whereas we celebrate the 52nd anniversary of the week of the young child so that we can continue to recognize and advance the early childhood education profession. Now, therefore, I, Ron Segley, mayor of the city of Pittsburgh, do hereby proclaim April 3rd to April 7th, 2023, as the week of the young child, and recognize that the future of our community and state depends on the quality of the early childhood experiences provided to our young children today. Would you guys just quickly say your name and what you do?
My name is Frances Oldweiler, and I'm with the Medical Clinic, and we provide free medical services and education to expecting mothers.
Thank you.
Diane Gamble, family response advocate.
April Buddy, family response advocate.
Desha White, USD 250, parents and teachers from Green Bush.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You bet. The next order of business is the consent agenda, and after pulling the commission, no one has wishes to pull anything from that to discuss, so we'll call for a roll call.
I move to approve consent agenda.
Seconded.
So seconded, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
McNay.
Yes.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Segley.
Yes. Okay, now we have a special presentation by the Economic Development Quarterly Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. It's a pleasure for Darrell and I to get the opportunity to not only provide a quarterly economic development update, but particularly since you'll be reviewing our contracts after this, I thought it might be a good opportunity to kind of do a year in review as well, just to talk about what the different projects that have been going on in our economy and in our community, and obviously to take any questions that you might have. So the way we'll do this is I'll talk about a couple of economic indicators that we always follow that are good indicators of how well your economy is doing. Darrell will talk specifically about some PSU initiatives, and then I'll come back up and talk about some community-based projects that have occurred in the last year. So first of all, some numbers that we always bring you that we track pretty closely. First of all, that unemployment rate, which has been historically low for a number of years now, it was only just about 15 months ago that we hit an all-time unemployment low in Pittsburgh in terms of unemployment rate of 2.0%. Now, even though it's back over 3%, that's still generally regarded as full employment, and you can see that it really hasn't fluctuated that much over the last year or so. So it seems like it's becoming a little bit easier for our employers to find the kind of employees that they need, but still very low unemployment in Pittsburgh. Sales tax collections, as Darren and Jay and the city finance team bring you these numbers, sales tax collections are still very strong. You can see up 25% over the last two years, and 2023 starting off very strong as well. This is a number that we brought you when it came out a few months ago, but we saw a substantial increase in the median wage in Crawford County from 2021 to 2022. That represents an increase of 22.5%, and some people might point to inflation as being wholly responsible for that. Generally, inflation over the last year has been about 9%, so everything above and beyond that truly is adding more money to people's pockets, which is a good thing. And then also that interesting number, when you look at the fact that our wage growth was 15th highest in the state, and of the 14 counties that were higher than Crawford County, the average county population was under 3,500. And obviously, when you're in that small of a community, it doesn't take much to really make that wage spike up, but in terms of the regional population hubs around the state, Crawford County easily led the way with 22.5%. I think the second highest was Leavenworth County, and theirs increased less than 10%. So really, really good news for Pittsburgh and Crawford County. These, the retail trade pool factor, for those watching, it may not be familiar with that number, that is an indicator of how many shoppers, retail shoppers, your community is losing as opposed to how many you're either keeping or attracting. You can see our 2022 numbers backed off a little bit, but we're still keeping or attracting almost twice as many retail shoppers as we're losing to other communities, and especially given our close proximity to a large retail area like Joplin, that 1.86 trade pool factor is a great one for our community. So Darrell, if you want to talk about some PSU-specific initiatives.
Thank you, Blake. All right, good evening, commissioners. I'll be doing our report in three segments tonight. The first one is the Tyler Research Center. Commonly, it's been renamed, as you've heard, the National Institute for Material Advancement. And we've had a really incredible year this past year. Along with our commercial tenant that I had spoke about, we were signing last year, they've been in the building a full year with operations and have grown to a staff of two full-time people there now, and they're using part of the research assistance, and we're growing that scope of work consistently, and it will continue to grow this year with an additional line of work. That particular company started with us about six and a half years ago on just some goodwill research work that we chose to do because we saw the value in that company. And the first year that we did the research work, it was about $20,000, then it went to about $150,000, $400,000, and now we're closing in on $1 million of what they're doing. They went out and commercialized the product, and through their private philanthropic company, they went out and raised about $50 million in revenue, and so it has created a lot of opportunity in terms of additional research. The next bullet item that you would see there is the $3 million in added equipment that we put in, and as I'd mentioned previous times here, we have been very successful in going out and writing some grants to really help substantiate improving the quality of the equipment in the research center. And prior to that endeavor, we were really working with equipment that was well over 20 years old, and most of it was just not adequate for doing the level of research that we needed to do. So that has made a significant advancement in the research and the opportunities and the commercial work that we're able to add into that facility. Some of the recent grants and proposals that we've been working on, the National Science Foundation Semiconductor Proposal, I think several of you've heard about this activity that's happening in the state of Kansas. We're participating in that with other joint entities. It's a total of a $20 million package. We're working on the piece right now to put a little bit of the initial research in the Tyler Research Center, and then there's a proposed prove-out facility that we are already in the stages of planning, designing, and implementing for. It's about a $7.5 million package to build the prove-out facility. We've secured about half of that funding right now, and we're working on the rest of the funding, and that is a very realistic estimate to have that thing start to happen within about the next year. The Center for Commercialization, that was another grant opportunity that we were successfully awarded about a year ago, and now since that time, we've added about four staff people. We've started to, well, not start, we have built a commercialization system that we're prepared to put projects through. We're still building out and refining the final process, but we have a couple of projects that's working through there right now, and we're actually out in patent litigation for that particular project. As several of you will recall, Dr. Ram Gupta was before the commission about a month ago when we celebrated the fact that we now have one of the top 2% scientists in the world based off of his research and papers credited by Stanford University. And Dr. Gupta has done a remarkable job in the research center. He's our go-to person. He has built out just incredible group of student staff. We now have over 30 researchers that work in that building on a 20-hour-plus basis, and the value of education that they're getting in addition to just the course bookwork that they're currently receiving is honestly invaluable. And a lot of that would not be available without the things that we've been working on to help with the funds from this organization and from the grants that we've been writing. Next up, we're going to talk about the Small Business Development Center. That, to me, is a really incredible, really, package that we have. You've heard me talk about the Small Business Development Center, and really, what we focus on is three primary indicators in that, and that's really the amount of money that's infused into the region, and it specifically, these numbers you're looking at on the screen today are specific Pittsburgh numbers. So we've had over $2 million of capital infusion, and that's through startup companies, existing companies, and companies that go through a sale process to other clients. But really, how that breaks down is hours of client services, and so our counselors inside the Small Business Development Center spent 625 hours of recordable hours with clients. That's here in Pittsburgh alone. We cover 11 counties with our advisors and with our Small Business Development Team. Within those numbers, that's 86 unique clients, so that's 86 businesses of people here in Pittsburgh that are starting business, and inside of those numbers, there's 11 new startup businesses last year that we helped to start a new business. Does every new business make it? Not necessarily. And so one of the things that we really like to point to is when our counselors from the Small Business Development Center work with those clients, the percentage points of them making it as a small business are very, very good. There's very few that go through the center, because a lot of times you have to make a hard choice and a hard comment of telling these people they may not have the right cash flow projections, they may not have the right business plan, and that's why it's really important that we have those valuable trained people so that they're able to deliver really tough news, but more importantly, help the customer, help the clients build and stand up a new business. The other two things that are happening within that center is the State Marketing Center, so we host a group of students that run the State Marketing Center for the Small Business Development Center. I think I've mentioned it in the past, but the SBDC is funded by the Small Business Administration nationally. It's sponsored by the State of Kansas Department of Commerce, and it's sponsored by Pittsburgh State University, so there's a three-way match in there of where those funds help support that activity from. And then the State Call Center is another designated center where we host the students here in Pittsburgh that take the random calls. For any of the calls at the other centers around the state, there's seven SBDC centers spread out around the state, but all of those calls come to Pittsburgh when there's somebody not in those offices, and our representatives here field those calls and then send those leads back to qualified business counselors. And then finally, the Foundry down at Block 22, you've heard us talk about that quite a few times. I think we've got really great news as we report today. The tenant occupancy, obviously, we had two of our original startup businesses move out of there this last year, and the good thing about that is they merged as one company, and they moved out into a business, into a building that they bought and repurposed, and we were able to retain them in downtown Pittsburgh. So as they moved out, the incubator was open, and we've moved some other businesses in. And in addition to that, the Business College, we now have Dr. Michael Davison, who, again, you guys have heard from him before, he's now officing out of our building, Fourth and Broadway, and we're conducting some of the management business classes now at the Foundry in the big community conference room there. Point Forward, the other organization that was stood up last year is also officing out of that facility, and then we renewed the attorneys and the insurance agents and a couple other of the graphic design companies that was in that space. The big news I really like to report this year is the Pitsco Idea Shop. That thing's been through a couple of challenges when we thought we had it ready to stand up, and we went into COVID. We came out of COVID, we came up with a new plan, we didn't quite have the right plan put together, so it took a little bit of a break, but we're now happy to report we've established a partnership with Green Bush, and we've successfully been running programming in there, and it really looks very promising, and for this summer, we're lining up a lot more programming for students, young kids, to have very unique experiences. The Small Business Development Center is obviously located in that facility, and we have three counselors working out of that location. But the exciting thing I really come before you today to talk about is the Co-Working Cafe. So the space that's immediately next to Root Coffee House, that's a space where we've talked about trying to have a co-working space in there for several years. The university just was never in the right place to be able to fully stand that up, so we partnered with the Root Coffee House next door, and now I'm happy to report that we actually have six current tenants in there, and they have a program set up where people can come in and get day passes, so that's people that work in and around or just come to Pittsburgh for the day. They can go in there and use that as a working cafe and be able to sit and be a very productive session with internet and other amenities that we're working together with Root to do. So that's a quick review, well, maybe not so quick, of the Foundry.
Thanks, Darrell. So this is a chart that we show you from time to time that really tracks all of the investment in our community over the last 10 years since Darren originally put the teamwork approach to economic development in place, and I think you would agree that it's been successful. Almost $600 million in a community of our size is incredible. It's also very diversified, which, just like with your retirement portfolio, you want that investment to be diversified, and you can see there that we fortunately are able to do that here in our community. So over the last year, we've had about $50 million in projects that have either been announced or come to fruition. A few of those include FedEx Ground. This was a $30 million project, 250,000-square-foot facility that created, originally, they had hoped for 150 jobs, it actually ended up creating 165 new positions. And fortunately, right before the holidays, they were able to find all 165 to be fully staffed, so things are going very well out there. Really proud of the teamwork approach that it took to make that happen in only 18 months, which for a project of that size is really impressive, and Darren set the expectation in the very beginning that we were going to turn all information requests around in less than 24 hours, and that's the only way that we were able to make that project happen and happen within their timeline. So FedEx Ground was completed last year. Project that you heard about not long ago, AZZ or Avail Enclosures, they're actually one of Pittsburgh's oldest employers, about 105 years that they've been in our community, and last year they got the largest project that they've ever been secured, which necessitated an expansion. You approved a property tax exemption to help make that happen. That was a $2 million project that created approximately 20 new jobs. Limelight Marketing, Darrell mentioned that. This was a $750,000 project. They renovated a downtown property, moved out of Block 22, moved into this building, and great, not only a great job creator, but the average wage at Limelight is $72,000. Starting wage is $45,000. Brandy is at about 28 employees right now and wants to be at 50 within the next two years, so thank you for your support in bringing that project to fruition. Como Jewelry, I just wanted to remind the community of what that block looked like a couple of years ago when the city had the foresight to purchase that, and that's what it looks like today. And the city got all of its money back, both the purchase price and the demo cost. The Comos took care of that and just did an incredible job with that project, and obviously, much better looking and glad to support a local business there on Broadway. The Parolo Education Center, which works right next to Commissioner McNay's office at the Community Health Center, I believe you're going to get to tour this in the next couple of weeks. This is almost open. They hosted a large group from Kansas State in town today at the Parolo Education Center, but this is going to be a game changer not only for Pittsburgh but in terms of being able to recruit and retain physicians to our community because the numbers show that the majority of physicians stay where they do their medical residency, so the fact that they're almost done with that is really a game changer for our healthcare community. Another shot there. Roughly $6 million project that actually probably ended up being about $6.5 million, but appreciate the Community Health Center continuing to grow here in Pittsburgh. Another one, Darren was a huge part of this, the Monty Industrial Park, which is at Free King in Atkinson. This is a joint effort with WACCO. You can see them currently building a transload facility that will really not only help our existing businesses that rail product in or currently trucking it in from larger rail areas like Kansas City, they'll now be able to rail that directly to Pittsburgh because it's much cheaper to rail product than to truck it. But that'll be a new, almost 200-acre industrial park that will not only be good for our existing businesses but also very attractive for new business development as well. So overall, these are the projects that we brought you in 2022 that went through the EDAC process, and for those that may not be familiar with that, what I mean by that is they applied for incentives from the city of Pittsburgh, so the way that process works is the Economic Development Advisory Committee is the one that screens those, then makes recommendations to you as commissioner, so these are all the projects that we brought you on behalf of the EDAC this year. Those are just in chronological order in terms of how we, or when we brought them to you and the investment attached with them. And then you can see overall, over $20 million in projects that we brought you last year. When you add in FedEx Ground, that did not apply for incentives, the total was well over $50 million, and I wanted to point out that final number there, that for that $50 million in investment, the city's share is 1.5, which represents less than 3% of the total project value. I hope that symbol represents less than. I kind of had to put my high school math cap back on, so if it means something else, I didn't intend it, I mean for it to be less than 3%, but I think that means that obviously, city leadership, the EDAC, certainly you as city commissioners are being very strategic with those funds and really leveraging them to spur private investment in our community. So the team approach that you allow us the opportunity to employ here in Pittsburgh, I know Darrell and I very much appreciate the opportunity to work with the city and you and Darren and his team, and really, I think is the big reason that our community has been able to announce so many projects over the last several years. So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question for Darrell.
Okay.
About prove-out building.
Prove-out facility, sure.
Prove-out facility, is that going to be on the site here in Pittsburgh?
It is, it's going to be adjacent to the NEMA, right directly next door.
That's exciting.
Very much so.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
The next order of business is to consider the following. Pittsburgh Area Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Services Agreement. Consider approval of an Economic Development Services Agreement between the Pittsburgh Area Chamber of Commerce and the city of Pittsburgh, in which the chamber will perform the services related to the location and retention of industrial, manufacturing, and retail businesses in the city for the period beginning April 1, 2023, and concluding on March 31, 2024. It's moved to first.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Pittsburgh Area Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Services Agreement. All in favor? Do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All not in favor by saying nay? No. Approved. The next is the Pittsburgh State University Business Development and Innovation Services Agreement. Consider approval of a Business Development and Innovation Services Agreement between Pittsburgh State University and the city of Pittsburgh, in which PSU will Pittsburgh State University and the City of Pittsburgh, in which PSU will provide support to the city to effectively help create and attract new businesses, industries, and manufacturing concerns to the city, as well as more effectively promote the expansion and growth of existing businesses and industries already located in the city, for the period beginning April one, 2023, and concluding on March thirty-one, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Advanced metering infrastructure. Consider staff recommendation to purchase hardware, software, and hosting services for advanced metering infrastructure in the amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents from Corin Maine of Olathe, Kansas, for year one implementation.
Good evening, Mayor Fishers. I'll keep this short. Real quick, though, I think we presented it a working day a couple of years ago. I want to run through real quick, just tell you what we're actually talking about tonight. Like any good industry, we've got all kinds of acronyms, including AMI. The meter process is an evolutionary process, just some of the parts of it, customer side, or I'm sorry, customer side, owner's side, the meter loop itself. This dude, there's a fifty-six-page manual on how to order all the different parts and configurations of this. It goes on and on.
We're going to go through each one of them.
We're going to skip ahead tonight. The meter itself, this is one of our new meters, this is an I-Prol, this is a plastic meter. Historically, our meters are a brass meter on the bottom with a plastic top on the register, and then the MXU, and I'll get into terms in a second. This actually, the water passes through, this is how we shut off, this is actual lock when we shut somebody off that we, from time to time, have people bust in. Anyways, this is actually a check valve on the other side, so to keep contaminants from coming back into our system on the customer side as well. This, this is really the device that we're talking about tonight. So, years ago, you know, we really moved into Census, that's tied into our financial software, they are, the proposal in front of you tonight is for Corin Maine, they're the retail supplier for Census, Census is the brand. Their components, put all together, they're national, they're an island company, they're a big entity, they do water, gas, the whole deal. We continue, really, about seven years ago, we did a big push to upgrade our meters. Meters are really, after ten years, their warranty goes out, and they started, kind of, they start the downward curve of failure. If a meter fails, that stops reading. This component can fail, this component can fail. This is, this has got a battery life for twenty years, guaranteed. Anyways, we started, we really focused on our big meters, we started everything, past fifteen years, we really did a big push on that. As we did the books, we ordered this component as well. About four years ago, these components changed and got upgraded. Let's skip ahead. There's, there's what it looks like just to order the loop, all the little things you got to know. Again, the other parts, meter lid, pit can, all that kind of stuff. So, where we used to walk, almost five years ago, we were still walking books. We were still walking around town. We didn't have to lift lids, but you had to take a little device like this, or the data collector, and touch every meter. We made the move and started making sure that all our books, we were able to drive-by reading, which is AMR, automatic, automatic, or the automatic meter reading. We did the drive-by. From that, these modules are called MXUs. We, we were going through a five-twenty R, that's the old style, which is a one-way communication, that's what pushes it to our truck. This device here. This has now changed to a five-twenty M that allows two-way communication and moves on. The, another acronym you'll see in the proposal is an RNI, they don't really describe it in there, but that's the Regional Network Interface. Again, back to the books, we have twenty, we have three zones that we build on the fifth, the fifteenth, and the twenty-fifth of the month, divided up into twenty-four books, which is about all the reading days you get in a month to walk. Those are how the zones are set up. We've got eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-five current active water accounts in our town. Right now, we've got about four-eight-hundred of them, or still on the old drive-by unit. Thirty-seven, I've actually got five-hundred-and-fifty of these. Unfortunately, three-hundred of them were ordered last year, they are being on delay because of chip shortages. So, we are still feeling the effects of COVID from a manufacturing standpoint. So, I currently have five-hundred-and-fifty of these on order as of a year, two years ago. But, so we're about forty-three percent, you can see highlighted, all the books we already have ready to go with this new style. What we're asking you for tonight is part of a five-year plan to move forward with doing advanced metering infrastructure. That's AMI. That is, this coverage map, everything in green is the area that you can see from our north and south tower, which years ago, I don't remember, you were probably on the commission, but remember when we did the commission, the communication huts underneath for fiber infrastructure and those type of things? That's coming back to pay off for us as a community now as well. They will put their, their infrastructure on our two water towers, and everything in the green area outside of Pittsburgh, which you can see goes a long, long way outside of town, allows two-way communication. Tonight, what we're asking you for, part of that money, is to buy the infrastructure and the hardware for AMI infrastructure. Obviously, the project management setup, we have to sign an agreement with Census for FCC, because this is radio communication, so you have an FCC agreement that we have to enter into, as well as Census Cloud Analytics, which is part of the interface with our financial software and our customer user, user portal. This is part of a five-year plan. Obviously, you can see we have forty-three percent of our meters, but we're to the point. We've been talking about it for a couple of years, we've been going through all the process, it's time to start putting it in place. We really feel like in the next five years, we can be on a total AMI, AMI system. What that means is that we are not doing drive-bys in the truck to check meter readings. We are, our customer service desk is doing a two-way communication. We don't, we would not have to have three different billing periods through the month. We can hit a button from inside City Hall, request a collection, and probably within less than an hour, we would have all the readings from all our meters inside of town. Big part of that is an occupancy change, you know, we're fifty percent plus of rentals. As we have occupancy change, you can, you get that two-way communication I talk about, if you get an occupancy change, we don't necessarily have to turn it off if it's just, you know, one tenant out, one tenant in, we just have to collect the reading, we can do that from there. This also allows, with this interface, we can set up alarms for customers, we can set usage rates, you can set high-level alarms, we can do all kinds of stuff like that, where, you know, every she has her stuff, go ahead, Daryl.
Can you, so, on that rentals moving in and out, if it's over the weekend and we're not around, can you program it so it turns?
So, no, I know what you're asking me. So, that's actually done by a meter. They are advancing with meters to do that. There's a few of them out there, they've only been out for a couple of years, they don't, they're not a Census brand, they're, there's a lot of different reasons not to do that, and they're still pretty expensive for the reality. It would be nice to do that, but that's, reality-wise, that's still quite a ways out. You know, and cost-wise, should do that. This device is around a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars apiece, as it stands right now. So, if you look at that and you look at the four-eight-hundred, you know, that's around a six-hundred-thousand-dollar number still to finish, finish up. All this, we've been working through our operating budget, we've been trying to pay as we go to make all this happen, that's part of why this is a five-year plan. There's also a process of this where we have to learn, we have to validate, we have to confirm that, you know, there are some horror stories out there about towns going all-in on AMI, hiring subcontractors, and they've almost bankrupt the city, because it wasn't implemented right. So, we're doing this in-house with our staff, working, forming numbers, it will be a step-on process. In the back of that proposal, you'll see that there does have a customer portal interface, we're not asking to move forward with that. We really need to work as a staff to understand what we have, that we're using it correctly, and really get to know it. That might be something, years down the road, we would really want all our customers to be onboard before we really interface with the customer portal. But that's, that just gives you an idea of what is the possible, the possibilities, what, what's coming, so.
Matt, is there, once you go to that, that new system, is there checks and balances? Is there a way of, I mean, are you all in with the two-way communication?
We will, we will, so, once we get the hardware set up, we get implemented, we will continue to do things we are. It might even not even be till end of next year before we start to do something that, so that we can verify.
So, you'd have parallel systems?
We have parallel systems, correct. To make sure the books that we have that are currently able to be collected as an AMI system are still being read in the field, and we're, we're doing our checks and balances that way. And they, I mean, this ain't their first rodeo, so we'll, we'll go through all that as we learn the process. Yep, and so, it's a nice staging, right? You know, really, the payback really starts coming when you have about five thousand meters, even since it says that, that they really want about five thousand meters ready to go before they really want to launch. And so, we are, you know, if we could get what we had, we'd be, we'd be right there. So, it's just kind of time to do it.
So, this will do away with drive-by reading?
This will do away with drive-by reading.
And I think I talked to Darren a little bit about it, you can also shut water off and?
We will not be able to shut the water off.
You still have?
We're just taking the readings, we'll still have to go physically, if we got to shut somebody off, we'll have to physically still shut them off. And we'll still be, you know, some people say, well, if you're doing all that, then you don't need to, the person, well, that person, this part still fills, this part still fails, there's still plenty of work to be done. So, we're not getting rid of employee, we're, we're still keeping up, plus just the change out of keeping all this going, so. But it is, it is a better customer interface, it does allow for some high-level alarms. I mean, a lot of what we have in the water world, you don't. If you got a leak, we've had leaks in basements, we've had customers out of town, we've had, we can set those alarms with this infrastructure that if it goes abnormal, abnormal usage, we can get those alarms, we can get text messages to our staff to go shut those off or to check on the situation. You know, and those always are a case-by-case, because you don't know, you know, middle of March, someone started their landscape irrigation system that runs to their house meter that, you know, so you just, we can, we can adjust all that.
I assume that thing you have your hand on is the antenna?
This is, yeah, so this is, actually, it's all built in to this, this is the battery, the receiver, the transmitter, all that. This little piece right here actually sucks it up to the lid, the water meter lid, smashes it. If you look at some water meters downtown, you see this top part, this part sitting on top of the meter, this just holds it to the top of the can, so it's not as buried as deep in the bottom, just to help transmit the signal.
The reason I ask is, how do you drill the hole through that steel?
We do it with a plasma cutter, we do a lot of that in-house. You can order pre-made lids for these. We've actually, actually, our fleet mechanics on downtime, we bring those lids in, and we just change them out and have them cut them with a plasma cutter. Yep, so we don't, we don't order new lids, we recycle lids and cut holes in them to adjust that.
Is there any additional training, staff-wise?
Yes, there'll be all kinds of training for.
Are you talking City Hall people, or the ones out in the field also?
Both, both, it'll be for both. Primarily, it'll be part of the finance team and customer service. This part of it, the hardware part of it, we've already pretty much got down. However, the interface with the cloud software and analytics, we'll have to do some in-house training for, for our staff, for our water service representatives.
But it's not going to throw a code that says that the people have a leak, that's a bigger-than-normal leak? Is it going to do something to that effect? Will they know?
Yeah.
I know the bigger ones.
With these new MXUs, actually, if we have one of these in place with the new meters, we can put a little device on these and actually read them thirty-day usage every fifteen minutes, so I can track, we can track like hours of usage, we can see if there's a consistent leak, or if it's just like, we've had a couple people, I'm like, you don't have a leak, it's your sprinkler system kicking on at four o'clock in the morning. It shuts off, you have zero usage for a couple hours and then, or whatever.
And the major leaks, there's alarms if it towers?
There's alarms that we can set in, we can set in parameters around when to kickoff, text messages to the staff, alarm notifications, those type of things. Yep.
Any other questions? None, seeing none?
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Non-agenda reports and requests, city manager?
Looks quiet.
Nothing?
Nobody looked back at me, so I figure.
Nothing?
We're good.
Okay. The mayor's moment, just a second, where we had the, the second meeting for the spruce-up Pittsburgh. It was quite successful, we'd have liked to seen more people there, but we had a good contingent of people. And we're moving on from here, from, by going to, we'll now meet with the various quadrants and, and start our cleanup here in the very near future. So, that's, that's moving ahead successfully, we, we'd like to see everyone involved, there are many organizations involved as possible. Thank you.
All done?
Yep.
Move to adjourn?
Been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.